I'd like to call today's planning commission meeting to order. We have established quorum. All members are present. If there's anyone planning to speak during today's commission meeting, I do like to administer an oath right now. All you have to do is say "I do" after I say, "Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?" Thank you very much. Disposition of the last meeting's minutes, they are attached to the back of our agenda. Everyone had a moment to review those, either the pre-minutes that were sent out by Shirley or right here. Remember again, we had a couple cases, one lot split we ended up not discussing. We did vote on it, or had a number of questions about another lot split, waiting on more information. Looks like we have that here.
I'll move, we accept the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Alright, we'll move on to cases. First case is number 1108. Again, this was discussed first at the last meeting. This is on Altamont Drive, Lot 7B, lot split. John Paskey, would you like to give us a brief summary of the changes perhaps that was made since the last meeting?
Yes, what you have in front of you that I gave you earlier a little bit ago are the applications now have been split instead of both lots split being in one. The .385 acre split for the existing condos, the one that you approved last time, if we took it out. The mayor didn't want me to verify lot coverage and it seems like we're right on it, right about 30 percent on the existing slab. So, that seems to be okay. So I just wanted to give you a packet or a copy of that packet so you had it there for your records, that it's now a separate application instead of joined with the one, the other one that we did before. The new application this time then would be what the other half of last, or last planning commission's meeting was, which is the clubhouse property being split off of the entire parcel that would be remaining there. The clubhouse is a .878 acre parcel to be split off. Again, Mayor, we are fine on lot coverage, it's at 5 percent on the building, 25 percent total lot coverage. So, we're well below the numbers on that. And as we discussed last time, we were kind of hoping that somebody from the High Point Village Condo Association could maybe give us a little recommendation or letter of approval. I can say that I did receive an email from Ed Peterson, who happens to be here today, and we can speak with him if we need to. But he did address it to myself and to the Athens City Planning Commission as president of the High Point Village Condo Association. I would like to indicate my support for the clubhouse lot split. Split will allow the future conveyance of the clubhouse and associated property to the association. I can be reached at the following numbers if you need any additional information and any other questions, I think he can probably answer better than I in regards to what they were presented and what they know they're getting or not getting.
I think the biggest concern we had with that clubhouse lot split, beyond whether the Housing Association was even interested in locketing split, acquiring the property, was also how, where the split occurs at the emergency access road and whether the housing association was basically fine with accepting responsibility for half of the roadway that falls in that lot. So, I think that's the main concern that was still outstanding.
I'd like to hear, and maybe Don, you want to speak to the emergency access road repair that is needed.
Well, on their property, there is none, so I think I'm clear with that.
At that section?
At that section, there's no repairs that I can tell, though I'm not representing the city's interest in that issue. And Ed and I did talk about it, so Ed can speak to that as well. I agree with what Ed speaks, I agree with the bouncing on that particular section. There's no repair that's visible or anything like that, so I understand.
Andy, I'm sorry, we're probably struggling to pick you up on microphone, so if you could just sit at this table while we ask a few questions, it'd be helpful, I appreciate it.
Don, is he coming up?
Mr. Peterson's going to sit.
Well, as I indicated before, that we've made the association aware of really for some time now relative to the intent of the split there, and that it would fall within the center of the Egress-Ingress Road. And from, I guess, observational standpoints, there hasn't appeared to be any need for any repairs at this point in time. And it's just a small section. And I'll let Mr. Peterson speak in regards to the association's position on that.
We agree with what Don said, invisibly looking at the road. That particular section of it does not require any repair. It's, of course, not debased road, blacktop or anything like that, it's just simply an access road. And there's no repair necessary on the upper end of it.
I may add that Andy Stone, myself, Ron Lucas, and Jessica did drive that the other day. And we did go up the hill all the way from UE, all the way up through the access road in Andy's vehicle. Obviously, there are some issues closer to the bottom of the road that's not on their property, but at the top, at that location, it's basically bedrock still where the dirt's been scraped off. So, it's pretty solid base.
You ready to drive it?
Yeah.
The whole way?
All the way up, yeah.
I guess, where, John, where is it that it's, I guess, defined what condition or what the paving has to be for an emergency access road for a subdivision?
That's a good question, because I think that's probably a Chief Troxel question more than anything. I think all he wants other than is access to get up there. It could be, to my knowledge, I have to ask him, it could maybe be a gravel road, it could be grass, as long as something's not built there, it's an easement that he's got a right to drive through there if he wants to.
Okay.
I don't know what the requirements are, that'd probably be a question for him.
Alright. Any other questions or commission members? If there's no questions or discussion, does anyone want to put this forward to a vote? I don't, we never voted on either, I think we sort of, kind of approved the 3.85 that, but we didn't see them split before like this. Am I, that's correct?
We approved the .385.
Oh, we did?
Building Site 10.
Okay. I couldn't remember if we had approved it without having them split apart like that. I apologize.
So, this would be approving the .878 acre parcel from the rest of that parcel, which is Lot 7?
Building Lot?
Lot 7B.
Lot 7B, it's 77. Yep, 7B.
And if I wouldn't, you know, mind, obviously this is, this conveyance and this lot split is really to the benefit of the association. So, this asset can be conveyed to them.
Good.
And I don't, there's no other intent other than that. And it's their desire to have that property.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with the arrangement for the emergency access road?
As a whole, no. At a specific place, that's another story.
We can only look specifically, yes.
We haven't heard from the chief on what conditions he needs. But, you know, if you're satisfied that, you know, that fulfills the requirements.
The road basis for the emergency access road has some failure. It was accessible.
At the lower third, there is some slippage on the emergency access road going up there. Still lining up, this time, we were in a SUV, I can't speak to what would happen with a engine, truck, fire truck going up through there. But, you know, once you got up farther up, it was in pretty good shape.
And if I understand, you said last meeting that the access road is pretty much a split lot all the way up, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and from what I can tell, you know, whether it was actually built truly on the property line, it's separate, but there are two parcels there, and the current access road, it kind of is on a split of parcels already, all the way up.
And that's still Citizens Bank?
No. One side's Citizens, the other side I believe is Capital First.
So, yeah. They're really, you know, obviously that's a separate issue than this issue as far as I'm concerned, but, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it'd be interesting to hear what Chief Troxel would say, the requirements, but I don't think that really affects the splitting of the slot though.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we split the parcel, clubhouse parcel, from the Lot 7B.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Can I just double check, so there's four, basically there's four owners, or four, as far as the, who have the access road on their properties?
I think there's more than that, right?
Four. It'd be the Citizens Bank, the Capital First, the Condo Association now, and whoever ends up, well, it's still, at this point, it's Citizens up there, but if they sold off that parcel at the top of the hill, the residual of this, then yes, that would become a fourth.
Again, as an emergency route, this is really not a paved or an improved right-of-way, it's really an easement to get across. Exactly. And again, if we had to actually pave it or something, that'd be a whole new process at that point. And it's, again, I understand, again, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the split use of this. I've been told that's often a problem when people have shared driveways in various parts of town. You know, one side of it's owned by somebody who has different, you know, concept of what a driveway should be.
Well, I was told I own halfway into a state route, so, but it's not like I'm maintaining it or responsible for the clearance.
That's not a comment.
It's not.
Are there agreements in place already between the two parties at the top here as far as, you know, if repairs do need to be made?
It's an easement for the city to utilize that as, there's, I don't believe there are and not, there were none required when that easement was developed. So, that was an easement that was agreed upon by, I believe, the city and the original developer.
I believe it was required as an emergency access.
Right, absolutely. But, that was, that was an agreement to have the easement, the easement was required, you're right. But I don't think there was any maintenance agreements developed within that agreement. So, it's really an easement for the city to be able to utilize that as such.
Offhand, Don, do you know if this is, this is technically a cul-de-sac, you know, we're looking at an emergency easement here, do you know if that is actually within the distance, or does it require, did it require variance when it was plotted, do you remember?
Trying to remember this, and I don't remember.
It was approved as a pod.
Yeah, with the variance for cul-de-sac lengths? I don't remember.
I don't think that there was any real, because the project's not yet complete, because the project would continue and the still, the intent could be to continue on.
Okay, so it might at a future date require?
Absolutely.
A variance for cul-de-sac length?
Right. And I, you know, right now, and obviously that's for Chief Troxel to determine, that there's plenty enough of a turnaround area for, you know, any large vehicle.
At this time, yeah.
At this time.
Okay. Well, I guess, yeah, my feeling is the, putting the split down the middle doesn't change. I mean, still have that to deal with on the other lots, I don't think that's problematic. I think it's something that maybe the city should look into if there is maintenance agreements or anything, but again, it just wouldn't change that effect. Okay. Any other discussion? Alright, so again, there is a motion, a second motion to vote to accept the lot split 7B from the clubhouse parcel, so all those in favor of accepting the lot split, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstaining? Okay. Alright. John, it would be something, you know, more out of curiosity and I guess for future, when we look at planned urban development, to look at what are, are there maintenance requirements for emergency access roads or easements in general? I mean, most easements-
I know Chief Troxel usually requests to have some sort of access to a cul-de-sac if it's over so many feet long. I don't know what that number is, I can find out.
It's probably why this is there, though.
The reason being is the access to that cul-de-sac was to get blocked off, not necessarily for turnaround, but if the, if the only way up Altamont had a big tree fall across it, they had another access to get up there.
Okay.
And then what the quality of that road or a maintenance agreement or how that works, that's a good question.
Right.
I know Mr. Eichenberg, when he was with the county, used to require maintenance agreements whenever five or more property owners, so, in regards to stuff, but-
We have standard language for shared driveways and, you know, between private property owners, as well as for private driveways for, within the five mile range. And at county level, they've been doing that for years, and there's a process with how you, how you address conflicts between the property owners. They're supposed to go through Athens County mediation services first before it gets to a civil level at a court to try to figure it out. But they also have standard language with which how often they're going to maintain it, how they're going to share the cost for gravel for these private easements, et cetera. That information's recorded on the flats when they're at the county level. We require that before they sign off on those shared driveways. Once it's recorded at the city or the county level, there's no enforcement level for how to, you know, it's a civil issue, is generally the position that we would take on it. And so, if the neighbors agree to a different way to maintain it, then we just allow them to deal with it and don't worry about it from that point forward.
Yeah, I guess I just wonder how is it any different than, you know, a sidewalk or city right-of-way easement where, you know, if the city does have to make repairs, it's billed to that homeowner or-
Yeah, with this type of an easement, I'm, I'm-
The easement technically, we don't own it, we might have to maintain it just to make it accessible, which is what I'm a little bit questioning at that point, to what standards we want to maintain that. I mean, if we really make it nice and everybody's driving up and down, it turns into a pseudo-road.
Exactly.
On the other hand, if my memory's correct, I don't think this required a variance for the length of cul-de-sac, which is really why you want something like this.
Right.
The concept there is if something does slip or a tree fall on the front end of a cul-de-sac, you have certain distances that you can get some, you know, fire hoses down.
Right.
We'll have to, I know there's some variances for Phase 2, I don't remember any Phase 1, but I don't, it's been a while.
And I would contend that it is indeed the developer's responsibility to build and maintain the access road as an emergency access.
But the problem here is also that you've got four-
Yes, I heard.
Which is why we're questioning this, this right ownership in one sense.
Yeah.
Maybe something to think about in terms of policy, not doing it in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's also, it's sort of unclear with it being an emergency access road and also an easement, an use to easements not being considered roads.
Yeah.
So, this is, this has this sort of dual language in there.
Well, maybe to consider Bob Eichenberg's county policy.
Well, that's what it is, it's a, isn't it, PAE, private access easement that he uses and used to use. We do have that language. I thought we incorporated it.
We do, yeah.
Okay.
The language we use was initially the county's, yeah.
Nice. Alright, so Johnny, if you could look into that a little bit further, that'd be helpful. Alright, this movement, communications, got a number of items on there. I don't think we'll really spend any time on the rezoning request, since we're sort of scheduling a whole meeting for that next, next week.
Shall we discuss the time of that, though? I think we haven't set a date, right?
Oh, yeah, we never did agree of time. Alright, let's pick that up first then.
I'd use a 6:30?
Yeah, I think Paul had suggested we move it up a little bit earlier, 6:30 or so. Is that what works for everyone here, though? That's key.
6:30.
That's mine, you know, pay my supper.
Well, bring your supper. Bring your supper. We wouldn't even ask you to share.
And that would be on the 16th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the community center.
Okay.
What did we say, 6:30?
6:30.
Is this going to be a formal planning commission meeting with an agenda or just one item on the agenda?
I would think it's a-
It's not really technically a public hearing.
Yeah, right.
I would suggest it be the single item on the agenda.
Let it be the-
Right, but would it count as a full sort of session?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can cover it that way. We'll dispose of the minutes very briefly.
Okay, so we have a status quorum, disposition of minutes, and then one item on-
Yeah, one communications and then adjournment, no, I guess we can announce our next meeting. People might be interested.
And then I've scheduled a, a public meeting with AEP for the Thursday evening at 7 o'clock. So, people may come back and forth to the community center two nights in a row. That's to discuss the tree trimming issues.
Okay. I'll bring that up to the press conference.
I don't think I can meld them together.
I was trying to get it some way, but-
I know.
Confusing the issues. Okay. And I meant to bring that, I did put together a full 24 by like 72 of the, from Jacobs to East State Street, so I'll bring that, I'll bring that to you guys.
We have a second one right here, too.
Okay.
So, it'd be probably, it would be good to have-
Well, yeah, multiple.
Spread a few of those out on tables and-
Right.
I'm not sure how you guys want to handle it, I thought we'd just handle it more informal, but if there's anything specific topic-wise or a structure that you guys want to have, just try to let me know soon so we can try to get it prepared.
I was going to bring, bring rolls of trace paper as well so they could drape it over the, so we can keep on adjusting, not sort of screwing up the clean sheet we have.
Are we primarily discussing just the shifting of the R1 and R2, or the R2 and B3, I guess is the question I would have.
From, I would think it's all.
All three components, I think.
Yeah. I mean, looking at it from all ways, I don't know what is exactly going to come of the meeting, I think it's more to finally get a sense of how the constituents in that area feel other than the ones that have just been, that presented the proposal.
Will there be more than two options? I mean, right now, we have the proposal that you made, the proposal that the neighborhood made.
I think that's why the trace papers-
Yeah, I'm almost considering like those options, those are things that are already out there.
Okay.
And now it's really to see, I guess, what else is available.
And I think, John, did you have one, two, so three early?
Yeah. But I think that sort of shows that it is very sort of flexible, and it really's going to have to do with what the people in the neighborhood want things to look like, not only the residents, but the business owners.
Yeah, that'd be great, Sarah. You can do a shout out to the business owners that they attend.
For the development of Grandview Highlands.
Do you want to do like pushpins or any of that type of stuff?
You mean, on the board, on a map?
Yeah, see, I mean, if, to find out, you know, if we get specific property owners who would be impacted by, you know, change in zoning to their land, whether, what, to say, "I live at this address and I'd prefer it to remain R2," or "I'd like to see a change to R1 or to B3," I mean, do we want to hear that type of information?
Maybe a sign-up sheet on the side.
On an individual basis, or?
I don't know if we need pushpins, really, I assume lot numbers on this or addresses on the maps?
Yeah, yeah, as the owner of the property.
So, probably commentary, commentary clipboard, so if they have an issue, this is what I don't like to see and this is where I live, maybe, I don't know. The pushpin aspect might work too, but if you're trying to do tracing and pushpins at the same time.
Yeah, and I'll put together some sort of a document that shows, you know, the difference in zone, what the difference between R1 and R2 stands to you in real terms, with what you can do with your land.
Right.
And all that, so at least they're aware of those facts, how it actually impacts them.
The only other request I would think about would be, we obviously have become aware of deed restrictions on some of these lots. Maybe, some of these people probably don't even know they have deed restrictions on some of their lots right now.
And some people that probably didn't know, did something and it's too late.
Well, I'm thinking maybe the worst-case scenario is you can tell them, this is where you find out about a deed restriction, go back to your deed, but-
Yeah.
And I don't know, I mean, I say, I-
You could maybe bring in some examples, I mean, again, we didn't do an exhaustive search, but, you know, I think it's, it's up then to the homeowner to try to-
In most situations, you, any deed restrictions, if you're in violation of it, that's revealed at the time of a sale, because mortgage company won't, won't release some mortgage funds unless they know they have a free and clear deed.
True.
And so, if there's any inclusions to a deed or any issues like that, mortgage companies require that that be addressed prior to allowing a sale transaction to close, usually a refinance, too. So, there's, if there's any out there, they should, they're generally handled at that level. If a property hasn't sold in a while, we would have no way of knowing, but I can bring in some, some examples of that, and we can talk about that with any publisher shows up.
Given, I guess, that there's actually going to be four options available, John's, Nicholas's, the neighborhood's, and what's currently there, that would be four, will that preclude anybody else bringing in their proposal for options in there?
No, I mean, I'm not even looking at, this is, we, there's a consensus option, I mean, I think it's going to be probably a number of options are going to be brought forward at this thing as we go through it. I mean, I think we're just trying to build an idea of what, you know, sort of areas are going to start to look like. Because I, you got to fill in if there's a number of homeowners that are adjacent, you know, they're probably going to have one position versus another group, so, you know, we'll see. I mean, because the first proposal was clearly, here's what we see right now, it's just zoning for the current use. The proposal I put forward was maybe trying to look a little bit ahead, and then, you know, John's was sort of a super analysis of the both. I don't know, I mean, I guess I don't want to, I, you almost don't even want to bring those options to this meeting, in a sense. I guess you don't want to exclude anything at this point, and sometimes by having those options there, you know, people might be side to one more than the other, you know.
Well, it'd be good, though, yeah, I understand that, but I don't think people are going there with the idea that those are fixed in stone, but just, you know, just where the conversation is flowing at this point.
Bring lots of tracing paper.
Yeah.
What's the best 10 for tracing paper?
Definitely a single, single agenda item there.
Yeah, one agenda.
Couple rolls of Balmwood.
Yeah, exactly. Alright.
Do we reimburse you for that?
My civic duty.
Okay.
Any other discussion about the rezoning meeting for next meeting?
No.
Okay. See everyone then. Wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance, we were possibly going to vote on that, I don't think it was provided again with your packet, but did everyone, it might have been.
I have.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it.
I'm buried.
Did everyone have a chance to review the sort of draft version? Any other changes that people wanted, anyone that made?
I had one comment that was given to me yesterday, I had a meeting, a brief meeting with Ted Jacobson, he's a city resident and he's also a member of the Athens County Hazard Mitigation Team, and we meet on a quarterly basis, the mitigation, hazard mitigation group. He did point out to me, which I thought he made a very valid point, on page six of that document, under our exemptions on A, so this is the very first section, he pointed out that the exemption was written for only the city, fire, police, et cetera, and he thought we might, we might want to consider county services as well for the sheriff and emergency EMA and 911 as also being exempted from this. I thought that made sense since they're providing an emergency and a public service, but that was in, that never crossed my mind when we were drafting this, so. Leave that open for discussion, I suppose, but I think that would be reasonable to just say, the city and counties, fire, police, department of transportation, or other public service facilities owned and operated by local governments.
Can we, I guess, do we need to, though, because, I mean, do we, can the city tell the county what they can and can't do?
I'm not sure either.
You know, same as we can't say the state.
Right.
Well, for example, you know, the state highway patrol is out there, there's been discussion for a number of years about- There's been discussion for a number of years about citing an EMS, um, station on the far east end. So, I'm almost afraid to limit it to say county, it might be state, I mean, it could be.
So, is the city and other government agencies?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah. So, rather than mayor in the, the second part, or other public service facilities owned and operated by local governments? Or government agencies? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that would cover it, I guess.
Okay.
Take out the...
Take out the...
By government agencies.
By local government agencies.
Taking out local as well.
Yes. I just, yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
The local. By local government agencies.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't take out the cities, just say fire, police, department of, fire, police, or depart, yeah, fire, police, department of transportation, or other public service facilities owned and operated by government agencies.
Got you.
It's OGS. Even the United Nations.
They're a non-governmental org.
No, thank you, you caught me there. The absence of nations. All right.
I had another question, and we might have already discussed this, and I'm sorry about that. Twelve, A, under the applications, this is a priority.
Page twelve or twelve A?
Twelve, page twelve. At the top, A. And I remember you discussing this before about priorities, meaning seven being the lowest, but it does still include R1 residential, so I didn't know if there was any thought about omitting that from consideration at all.
Well, you know, I guess we, it was discussed and, I mean, it being the, the last priority and they would have to go through all these of why it couldn't work. And then, you know, we still have the right to not approve that.
Okay.
I mean, I guess there are some residential zones that are, you know, pretty rural in nature still in the city that...
Yeah. We also have like the R1 Paula, where the city owns the land on the far east side, out on East State, behind Hope Drive. That's city land, which is, for whatever reason, is zoned R1, but it's a private, it's a park. We did build in an exemption, you know, that's deed restricted, so we wouldn't be able to do that type of development on it anyway. But there are opportunities on the south side, um, far west Union Street.
University Estates.
Where there's some zoning of R1, University Estates, yeah.
Well... Like in the Briarwood area, though?
The rest of the tower covers most of it.
Yeah.
If it's in the, if, if you leave it in there for R1, it's in there for R1 and it's, it's up to the review process. Now, again, we're, we're ranking it so that R1 is the absolute last place that we're saying we want a tower located, period. But, yeah, it could be, if it's in an R1, then R1s are potentially spots to put them.
I mean, it seems like if, even though we're ranking them that way, you know, you, you, they're probably going to find a better site in an R1 than you're going to find one in an R3 to put in a tower, just due to the nature of density.
And again, it's, it's important to note that the ordinance is written to discourage towers and encourage stealth. Okay? And so, um, if it comes to towers, this is the order that we're putting them in. If you, if you think it's important to eliminate R1s, yes. I think we should leave it in there myself, because there are areas where they could potentially be placed in and we wouldn't want to limit that necessarily. But, you know, it's, if the planning commission thinks that's important, then that's, that's fine as well.
I'm just concerned about introducing another commercial aspect, though, to an R1 area.
It's, I understand, yeah.
I'm guilty as charged, I have one in an R1 zones and...
Yeah. Yeah, I just...
I know what you're saying, yeah.
I also, I would suggest maybe we look at B as well, right below that.
Yes.
Where the applicant has to describe why they could not provide it in a more suitable location.
Other than one.
So, if they, if they, if, if their proposal is for an R1, they have to explain why they couldn't put it in any other zone except that specific location. Or why they couldn't put it in a less visually distracting area of an R1. They would also have to have a fall zone in an R1, which is another challenge. So, um, you know, you're not going to put it on Morris Avenue, you're not going to put it on North Congress Street because you're not going to have the, the location to put that.
And I see C also applies the same thing, the same hardship that has to be described.
They'll be coming before us if this gets through and it's approved, so.
Right.
Good review.
You have to wonder how many years we are from technology and require any of these.
There you go, that cloud.
I don't know about that, but... I know bandwidth is, need is increasing, so maybe the towers will always be there.
The expectation is for more, not less, at least for the next twenty years.
Really?
Yeah.
Which is why I would be reluctant about the R1 myself.
See, I guess if I were going to take R1, I'd take all the Rs off. Because I think R1 is going to be better suited for a tower than in an R2 and R3, just by, again, the nature of the density.
Again, this, this is the lowest priority, the lowest and the hardest one to actually get passed. If you think more, I, I think, I would prefer to leave them in, um, if need be, put some harder conditions that have to be met. But I think a lot of them are already in here, in terms of, as you say, fall zone, listed priorities, statement that you can't make any, you can't find another site. And that, it's not only, it's not just leasing. Co-location is, is another point of view.
You also have down in F, below that, at the bottom of the page, um, specific reasons why, um, the city may disprove it. Conflict with the historic nature or character of a neighborhood or historic district, natural surroundings, safety. Placement or location which would create an acceptable risk, probability of such to residents, the public, employees, et cetera. Already stated purpose of a specific zoning or land use designation. Yeah, I think there, I think there's mechanisms in place that it can be left in our districts, but it could be...
Yeah, I think there's enough safeguards that...
If the planning commission thinks that's not sufficient, by all means.
My feeling is there's enough safeguards, especially with item five, that if, if you were to have an issue with something, it's this sort of reasonable probability risk, you know, and you don't need to say anymore.
And I think, Paul, if you could remind me, this was taken, this was, it's kind of a, drafted under a tried and true model that had held up, so...
Did you add the zones in, obviously, you know, some other community meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, it's kind of a mix and match kind of a thing?
Uh, it was, the, the ranking system was, um, I tailored the rankings specifically to the city, to Athens. Um, it's, I didn't create the, the concept of doing the ranking system, though. I just, I wrote the rankings based upon what I thought made sense and that was to, to have the residuals as an option, but them being the most difficult to actually meet. And then I know, Paula, there's still some issues, if, if this moves forward, that we'd have to work with council on relating to fines and fees. Those are still not set in stone on here.
And then my only, only comment was related to, and I know we have some amateur radio folks here. There were two separate ones, what was the, you know, you have your ham radios, and what was the other one? Something about a...
That's CB.
No. I thought it was like a, again, a cloud kind of thing. I've got a little lost.
If you have to share any information, you share it with me, with your council.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're, are you talking about like Wi-Fi, Paula?
Maybe, you had sent out that email, um, that showed us who's registered in the county, you know, as, as radio operators, but I thought there were two different kinds, so...
Not, well, I'm, I'm not quite sure on that, or I didn't read that, but yeah, I did, um, Ted Jacobson also provided, uh, there's a website. It's required that anybody who's a registered ham radio operator, um, that information to the public, uh, I believe is part of a license sure. You, you have to agree as a ham radio operator to be part of an emergency communication system. So, that information is public, their bandwidths or their call numbers, I'm not sure the correct term there. But what Ted pointed out to me, and according to that website, there's roughly ninety, um, ham radio operator, registered operators with four-five-seven-oh-one zip codes in Athens County. And there's over two hundred throughout the entire county that are, that are part of this amateur radio system. So, I think, or there may be a few here, if, if anybody would like to speak on that, feel free to. Not...
They only want to speak on radio.
Yeah.
And indeed, they have assisted with major event planning, the Pelotonia comes to mind, where, you know, they assisted law enforcement in renewing where everybody was at certain points in time, so...
Another discussion? Harry? Paula, Paul?
Should we vote on it or...
Uh, I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the draft version or to recommend it to city council for further revision and incorporation into the city code.
Second.
Any other discussion? Any changes requested?
No.
Well, that's, uh, city council has pretty good...
What was that?
He said nothing.
I'll, I'll happily take them. And again, I, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but like the chapter number, some of these things aren't set in stone yet. And so, council can make changes because it's, it's not part of zoning code. If council wants to move things around, they can do it with a simple majority to approve, so. And if you have typos, please give them to me, Harry. I apologize.
Man, I think the spirit is, is definitely there in the content, it's just how it's organized in the codes. We'll leave that up to city council. All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Any opposition standing? Okay. All right. Planned unit development review request from city council. This was, I think we discussed this last week again, right? Last meeting, I should say.
I think so, yes.
Let's see where we left.
It's the last page in...
It's the last page in our packet?
I think so.
At the minutes packet. All right.
Got it.
Last meeting, city council is concerned that developers are using the PUD process, especially in R1 zones, to get around zoning code. The commission discussed the intent and concern from city council. PUD changes from city council where only a single-family user allowed in R1 zone, no variances, defined single-family uses, preserve traditional single-family homes per lot, protect existing neighborhoods. I think that was our sort of discussion. The interpretation, city council's intent was to limit or not allow planned unit developments in R1. I, I think I'd suggest an exclusion in the R1 zone, so. Take a look back at that language.
And then you should have minutes from the planning and development committee of council.
Yeah. Behind that one.
It's the very last page of the minutes packet.
It says that Christine Ball said concern was expressed about permitting PUDs in R1 zones. She felt it should be restricted to, to single-family residences, as in R1 zones should be restricted to single-family residences, not PUDs. Nancy Bainett said R1 zones need more protection. None of the city's interest to allow these intensive developments in R1 zones, it does not serve the purpose of an R1 designation. PUDs were designed to give developers an incentive to use their space in an effective way. Would like to see some real stricter, stern limits on lot size. A single-family zone should remain a single-family zone. So, she didn't feel a total prohibition is necessary and that she would, how else she would do that? Paul, you understand?
Well, I, yeah. Okay, again, when I was sitting in the audience, watching city council put this through, I was concerned that they could, in theory, drop a planned unit development in a zone.
Right.
And I think part of our concern is that we have in the past, give a variance for the lot size. So, therefore, that does give us the ability to move it around in various zones. The way the PUD is structured is two acres. The last one we did was actually a variance for that. With that, I think there was one on Colson that was done the same way. So, you start looking and saying, okay, at that point, if we still had, could put it in any zone, R1, two, or three, you could end up, you know, wake up one day and have one place next to you, apartment complex next to you. Because it's, doesn't matter the zone, it's just the variance in size that was required. I think there are other things in play. I think there's actually a density legislation in our code that requires you have a certain amount of square footage per unit or per person that was limited. So, there are other feedback loops or checks and balances. I see what she's, she, her discussion is that we've, we've given a couple away and her concern was, of course, was the Klein unit. She was, be the first one to say that that's not the problem one, but that's an issue that could occur elsewhere. And when I, whilst this was being discussed, I was visualizing something, I think the ninety-four strategic plan of the Hendrick administration actually talked about putting apartment complexes and duplexes in my neighborhood. Because I had wide lots, which I did not know what lots they were talking about, since I didn't have any big ones there. So, I was concerned at that time. Typical, you know, probably almost a NIMBY at that time. But really, the whole thing didn't make sense to me, why, you know, it, it looked like it could be a possible opening as a, kind of problem, so...
Well, is it, I mean, I think we tossed these ideas around last time, but, you know, do you make it so that PUD, or, you can't put a PUD in a single, or in an R1 zone? Or is it a PUD in a R1 zone has to be the same density of the single-family housing or something? You know, I mean, what's the...
Yeah. I'm not sure myself.
I guess, I don't, I'm trying to think, it'd be nice to hear developers input of what would be an incentive to put a PUD in an R1 if you're just doing single-family houses as a PUD, you know, is that...
Well, it's what I spoke before. It's condos, townhouses. That's where I have, we have, I have the concern with this. If they can go and do a subdivision of Platts in a PUD and divide it up into be, be simple-held condos and then same developer owns them all and rents them out. And it's a way to get around the system and make basically a rental complex in an R1. So, I think we need to look at this in those regards as well. I mean, I understand what the idea of not allowing PUD in the R1, but I think it needs maybe go a little bit farther. If we, if that's what they're concerned about. Is add some, and I don't know what that is yet. Add some wording that states that, you know, our, our condos, our townhouses, et cetera, are going to be permissible in R1s if they're sub, it's a subdivided plat that's approved as a PUD or as a subdivision. So, those lots do not meet those density requirements, so it could go back to that density.
Right.
I think you look at the density requirement, basically, it's the minimum lot width, sixty-six feet. You take that by the average depth of a lot in town and you're hitting the density requirement, so. And obviously, the townhomes and condos aren't sixty-six feet wide, so. Am I making sense with what I'm saying here?
I think, if you recall, maybe about a year, year and a half ago, I believe, um, there was a gentleman, Sean Jones, who appeared before the planning commission. And he talked about, uh, potential development, he, on some land he owned, I think, off of Hoover. And he talked about kind of like making some bungalows or cabins in the woods. And he, he thought of that, they would all be single-family, but it might be a planned unit development because he would, the, the, the lot sizes might vary or flexibility with setbacks, et cetera. So, that he could try to, you know, build these bungalows or cabins without having to cut down as many... to cut down as many trees as possible, and some flexibility like that. So that might be where, you know, you'd have an R1 PUD that is built as an R1. I think Nancy Bane's mentioned about the, she's not sure on a total prohibition, that was maybe thinking about the fringe areas where you may want to allow slightly more density. Another option would be to, you know, only allow single-family PUDs within R1s, but consider larger PUDs if it's in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan for that neighborhood.
But then it gets-
Just throwing out ideas.
No, no, but it's true, it gets right back to the whole point of the PUD, is that there is that sort of flexibility that the commission has to review and see how it fits in with the, so, but putting things in there that we're already doing in the first place is then-
Right.
I think her biggest issue is the variances, and I think we've given a number for lot size. They don't meet the two-acre requirement.
The two acres, yeah, that's true.
But we've created variances before.
This would be another variance, I'd report. If we tried to do a duplex in an R1 zone as a planned unit development, you'd have, you know, one would be the lot size, the other one would be the actual building itself, the use of the structural building. To me, it's just another hoop that has to be jumped if somebody wants to do multifamily in an R1.
Right, I guess that's my, with their apprehension of kind of looking at it at a case-by-case basis, it'd be hard to put something into code that would, you know, provide the sort of coverage they were looking for. And, like I said, we look at it at case-by-case anyway. I don't know.
Well, we seem a little stumped. Perhaps we need to pick out some language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, they can move ahead of this without-
There you go.
Absolutely.
But they asked for it, so.
I hate, yeah, it'd be disappointing to tell them that, we just don't really have anything to say on that topic. We've got a lot to discuss, just not, it, I guess it'd be a hard one to, to limit in that sense, because I think you could-
It makes sense as a general rule, if we have R1 zones, we, they're zoned R1s specifically to keep them as single-family, and so we don't, we don't want to have, you know, an end around the zoning code by using a PUD to actually intensify your zone. So to me, that does make sense, if, if the intent of an R1 is to have R1s, then the PUD process can be specific, saying that, you know, in an R1 zone, we're expecting R1 PUDs and R2s, we're expecting either R1s or R2s and R3s, would be R1, R2, R3s.
Right.
If you're getting to fringe areas or something, it would still allow planning commission and council to award a variance if they think it's warranted, to allow for an intensity of, in the zone. But I guess we're saying on the face that we expect PUDs to stay true to our zoning code.
Right.
And so that's one extra hoop that a developer would have to show, that the, their added intensity isn't running counter to the intent of our zoning.
So if we put in a prohibition, there could still be a variance?
With a prohibition, no. I don't believe so. A prohibition, I don't, if something's prohibited, it's prohibited. You don't, you're not allowed to ask for an appeal to a prohibition, I believe. I'm not, I'm not even sure of that.
You know, I guess maybe if it's not a prohibition, what if it's a distance thing?
When you say prohibition, are you talking about this code itself?
Well, it's, PUDs are excluded from R1 zones.
Yeah. Or if you said that, yeah, all other PUDs except single-family residential PUDs are prohibited in R1 zones.
See, I just don't even know what a single-family-
If you say the word prohibited, you can't, I don't believe you can ask for a variance from something that's prohibited. But, do you know, John?
No, but that's what I'm saying, defining single-family.
See, that's, yeah, that's why I'd rather just exclude it. But it just, you know, I mean, if it is fringe areas, then, then I guess we could exclude it too, unless the lot is, you know, adjacent to any other zone. So only a PUD that's adjacent to it. If it's an R1, and they want to do a PUD, but it's adjacent to an R2, that's the only thing we'd even consider, looking at. If it's an R1, and all the lots are adjacent to other R1 lots, it wouldn't even, you couldn't even do an R, is that maybe what they mean by fringe?
So, looking at our zoning map there-
So the Klein one, in other words, still would come up, because it's an adjacent to a B3.
I mean, we would be eliminating a lot area.
I guess we're not seeing this happen very often, though. I don't remember a PUD that's come up that's been in solely R1.
Madison Heights, Meadow Lane.
Madison Heights is a B1.
Yeah, it's a B, but Meadow Lane, which is twenty years old.
That's what I'm saying, not free.
Westfield Place.
But representatives of the Athens Comprehensive Plan said, for instance, that the Madison Heights fit into the Comprehensive Plan.
Well, I'm not saying it's like-
But then again, that's a B1 zone, where Madison Heights is, so that's-
Right, so I'm saying exclusively have there been PUDs in R1. Except, I don't remember seeing one besides Klein.
They couldn't do staff parking.
And if we said the adjacent thing, then it, it would still be something that the planning commission could look at.
Yeah, Westfield's R3.
Yeah, Westfield's R3, all the lots are R3.
And then the one on, off Union, that's a B3.
Herald Square.
Herald Square. And then, what's the one over by the library?
Meadow Lane. That's Meadow Lane, then?
That's an R1. What about the apartments right in front of, on Home Street? Putnam Apartments. What's the zoning on that?
It's a B3.
B3, okay.
Well, I think it's kind of, isn't it similar to the argument about the cell towers and the R1s, 2s and 3s, as far as don't you feel, or do you feel so, there's enough hoops for developers already to go through? Or do you feel so something like this, you know, we need some added protection for R1?
I think-
In other words, we have, we can already turn down, if they do have to come in for a variance anyway.
Yeah.
Do we have enough reasons, do we have enough reasons to reject something like this, or do you feel so we need stronger wording?
Offhand, I don't, I'm not sure. Yes and no, I guess. I'd be concerned with the current makeup of council and the planning commission. No, I don't have many concerns about leaving the language as it is. I don't, I would be concerned, or you could see a concern, though, if, you know, there's, if people are trying to do an end around the zoning to intensify an R1. There is risk there, because if a planning commission and a council are fine with it, in any zone, that could happen. So it could be right in the middle of an R1 zone and not at the fringes. Like, again, as it stands right now with the, the people paying attention to this, I don't think it's a real issue. However, it appears to me as if council does think that's an issue, and I don't have any problems with making changes to it for the long term if we think there's a problem with it. There's a lot of, there is a lot of checks and balances in place right now, when it comes to-
Can you rezone a fringe?
I'm sorry?
Can you rezone a fringe?
You can rezone anything.
You can rezone anything, yeah.
I don't think it needs to be, I mean, I guess that, my suggestion would be PUDs are excluded from R1 zones unless adjacent to the other zone.
It's fine with me.
I think this wording is adequate as is.
Well, this is where it gets into what defines a single-family residence, and condos, townhouses, I'm not sure what the city council is envisioning as a single-family residence.
Meadow Lane's the perfect example of what I'm talking about, where if it was a PUD, certainly, I don't know if that was a PUD, it was a PUD.
Probably was, yeah.
But they are single-family residents.
They're single-family residents on their lots, and so somebody, a developer could do that, and then build an apartment building, own every unit, and rent everyone out, and it's in an R1 that way. Half of Meadow Lane's rented out now, if not more.
Does he mean, what do you mean by an apartment building?
Well, it can look like an apartment, it's a condo, but-
Meadow Lane is, you know, it's a single building with three-
Multiple buildings.
So there's, if somebody owned all three, what's to stop, you know, basically it's an apartment building, they rent them all out.
Right.
Then, you know, I think what, Herald Square is a subdivision, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess is that what?
But that's in a B3 as well, man.
Okay. RJ brought up a good point. Are they meaning owner occupied, when they say the single-family?
You can't do that.
No.
Well, I-
We know about as much about this as you do at this point.
Yeah, all right, so you can't exclude it.
Is it good for Chris to come up here and address the planning commission, just to-
Or just, at least a memo or something?
Clarify, clarify certain things?
Probably if we're going to do that, we should have a spectrum of what we think are the problems. I mean, I'm hearing Echo Lane, at Meadow Lane, as an example of where it would have a problem with this code. I mean, if we were to retrofit every structure, that would be one right there. The other ones are mostly Bs and R3s. Again, I think it's not only Chris who's pushing us, though, is a member of Bane, who is a little bit concerned with us, us putting that, the trend of us giving variances for lot size, and the idea we just put one in an R1 zone. How often that would happen, I don't know. I mean, in theory, as you say, you look at Priorwood, back into Priorwood, you look at other R1 zones where this could happen. This is, to me, is a little vague, that's why we have a trail wrapper heads around it, but, you know, whether it, whether it fits, you know, again, shared walls makes it a duplex, even though it's B simple and two people own it. I don't know. Maybe we, I would, I would look to, see if we can find some examples where this would be running, you know, cross-threaded with what we're trying to do here, and maybe ask them, we can ask and see what they're thinking, have them clarify it a little bit better. Because we'll, you know, somewhere along the line, we'll be administering it.
Right. Yeah, I guess we'll, I'll, maybe sure Lena and I could kind of prepare a memo, what we're sort of seeing in this, based on our discussion, and see if we can get some feedback of-
The project at Meadow Lane, in today's standard, with Title 41 and lot coverage, may, probably would have never, it would have taken a lot of variances, and they could have been denied from that standpoint, and that would have been the, you know, if that's what we're trying to prevent in R1s, so there may already be ways to stop it, but I'm just throwing it out there that if somebody's-
Which one is, is Meadow Lane similar by the-
Down by the library.
By the library.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're nice.
I thought people, yes.
Basically, that's what I'm saying, if we think those are okay, then we need to watch-
Right, we need to clarify the city council think those are okay, or at least the people are bringing this forward. Okay, well, let's table that for further discussion.
Maybe get some feedback from the council.
All right, another communication, a report from the planner and director of development, code enforcement.
I actually don't have very much for this meeting. I did, two weeks ago, I attended the state planning meeting in Dayton. I don't think I've talked about that at the planning commission yet. I did attend several good sessions, Fair Housing being one, also a really good session on different ways to get public communication and feedback and ideas on planning issues and general city initiatives. I sat in on a webinar yesterday with an organization that maintains these types of websites and communication services, so I think that's something that, down the road, maybe next year, I'd like the council and the mayor and service safety director to look at some of those ideas and see if we want to move forward with some of those interactive ways to communicate. I think that's pretty much all I have for this session.
Thank you.
Was that like a front porch forum, but expanded kind of thing?
No, front porch forum is a different model, and that would be more for neighborhood communication. This would really be more about, you know, if you're doing a planning process, rather than just having the public meetings and saying, you know, hey, if you have comments, email them to me, you could, for, for example, our arts parks and recreation plan that we're going to be working on next year, you could put up a topic of some ideas for things that we need, or programming that we need to offer for arts parks and recreation, and then somebody might say, I think we need to have a high-LI court. And then other people can comment to say where they think that's a good idea or a bad idea, or maybe not a high-LI court, but maybe we want a multi-function court that serves handball, racquetball, squash, and high-LI. And then we can talk about that, somebody else could comment and say, or the city could say, well, the average cost for that is $1.5 million. Are the people who, are people willing to pay that much money for that type of a service? And you could have a discussion about that. So it's a way to just get, bring more people into the fold who can't attend the meetings at 6:30 or 7:00 p.m. on a weekday because they have work or family or other things involved with, you know, in their private lives. It's just a way to reach more people and get more input, and try to engage more people into the dialogue. So there are several pretty interesting formats of how to do that, not just for planning models, but also for discussions about, you know, public works, roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, potholes, all that stuff, too, so.
Thanks. John?
The BZA meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, November the 8th, has been rescheduled to Tuesday, November 15th at 7:00 p.m. right here, due to election day, so get out and vote, a couple members here. In that meeting, we will have three cases. 25 Campbell Street is for Jackie O's, a variance for permissible B3 use in a B3 zone, but within 100 feet of an R zone. 498 Richland Avenue, Richard Schultz is the applicant for a, I can't remember the name of the restaurant now, Chinese Dynasty, I believe. Variance for parking for a restaurant, nineteen spaces is required, and they only have twelve, eleven or twelve. And the third one is for 145 East State Street, Lily and Chandler Clover, variance for construction of a fence and a front yard setback. So those are the three cases that will be held that evening, and I'll share the results with you the 16th, so.
Any questions? I thank you both. I'll skip the citizens to speak. Well, I should always, eventually, once we're more interactive, people in the audience can speak, but, anything? All right, thank you. Announcements and other business, our next meeting is going to be November 16th, a special evening meeting at 6:30 p.m. at the Community Center. I'm not sure what room it was.
A, maybe?
I think A and B. I'll go check with Rich.
Okay, A and B, sort of the-
Adjoining.
Yeah. Would that be the east end?
West end.
West end, okay. And any other announcements? Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.